I'd like to call this meeting to order and the first item on the agenda is to go into closed meeting and I'm going to turn the reading over to Mr. Brown and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Brown later.
Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community, its project 2013-08. Please, a roll call.
Any motion?
I have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?
Aye.
We are now in closed meeting. Need a motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Have a second motion, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?
Aye.
Okay. Certification: Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law was discussed in the closed meeting to which this is. Certification resolution applies. Only such public business matters were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
The next item on our agenda is invocation where we observe a moment of silence and you can reflect any way you'd like to reflect and then after that we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Mattis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation. And I think, you know, when a person put 33 years in, it deserves us to come down and to meet them at the... of service to Montgomery County. This 13th day of November 2013, signed by a county administrator and off-service agent. Somebody congratulate you on 33 years and you still look young enough to do 33 more. Yeah. Okay, listen. And she's good, 33 more.
Now I get to volunteer.
Now you can be a guardian.
Congratulations.
You changed your mind and you want to help with guardianship.
But I'm going to go with that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ann. Thank you. Pam and Karen, thank you guys for being here tonight also.
Next item on the agenda is the addendum, do we have one to see?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. We'll move on to delegation. The J Department of Transportation, Mr. David Clark from VDOT will provide an update on road projects issues in Montgomery County. Welcome, David.
Thank you, David. Just a couple of things. Probably the biggest is that we're finished, we've been working on this project on Lake Forest Road for, it seems, several months. It probably hasn't been quite that long. Took us a while to even get started just because this is a drainage issue. It's a spot on the road that's filled in, there's a hollow that comes down. It could have easily been a bridge, I guess, when the road was built. But it probably been about, I don't know, 20 feet above the creek level if it had been a bridge. It was not built as a bridge, it was built as a fill with a pipe at the bottom and that pipe failed, I don't know, maybe about a year ago, was it? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, about a year, year and a half ago.
Yeah, water was still getting through but it sloughed off on one side and we were trying to get up, find a way to replace that pipe without having to dig the road out because it's a dead end road, there's no other way out. So instead of trying to build a parallel detour, digging half the pipe out, replacing half and switching, it would have been a long process and I don't even know if we could have gotten a detour in. We elected to bore and jack a pipe through the fill, which is, it's a fairly standard procedure, except in this case, the road is a fairly old road. I don't know what kind of fill is in there, but even with the equipment we had, one of our best hired equipment contractors, Henderson Company, they just, they had a hard time drilling through whatever rock debris or whatever was in that fill. But that's the story. They finished last week, end of last week or early part of this week. Pipe's working fine. We gotta work on the shoulders a little bit, maybe add some guard rail in there and we'll be done to that part right now. The next thing they're going to do is move on to McCoy Road. You'll see some traffic disruption on McCoy Road, not far from that intersection where there's a little bit, again, settling, sinking of the road. We're gonna have to dig out, close a lane, dig out, build it back up from, not from the entire bottom, do a little bit of building. Good thing about that, it's not going to require a pipe of any kind, so that shouldn't take very long. That'll be the next thing you see with, sort of in that area. The other thing that's happened this past month was we finished the revenue sharing project on Sourwood Road, it's the dirt glue project. Dirt glue is this procedure, it's a new product where you mix a polymer in with the existing gravel road, shake the road, grade it, roll it with a roller and it flattens out, makes it a good, hard riding surface, it's somewhere in between a paved road and a dirt road. It's a really, but when you ride on it, it's like a really well-maintained gravel road is what it rides like, one that doesn't get washed towards, doesn't have the dust, doesn't get the puddles as easily. What we're looking at, we've never used it before within VDOT, it's still in the experimental product stage. The test now is how long will it last and what kind of maintenance do you have to do in the meantime? The cost of this particular contract to do about a mile of road was, I believe, $177,000. That's about what you could surface treat the road for, but we couldn't surface treat it in the state that it's in, so we've had to do much more improvement to the road. So if you wanted sour wood to be, sour wood to be, it's not, if you want sour wood to be a surface treated road, it would be a much different product than you'd be buying. Yes, it would cost a lot more, but you would get a different product out of it. By the same token, the $177,000 will go a long way just maintaining. We could have maintained that road for a long time with that amount of money, but you don't get the product that you get with this. When you grade it, sometimes a week later, it's almost in the same shape as it was before with puddles and depending on the weather. So it really needs to be evaluated on its own, it's hard to compare it to either our current maintenance or a paved road. And that's what we'll do in the next year or two, I guess, the county, the residents can evaluate and see what happens if they like it and decide if it's worth that kind of expenditure, that kind of funds. I'm glad we're still into trying, I think it's very interesting, I love doing projects like this, so I think it's a good idea. One other thing that occurred in the past month is we held a public hearing in Blacksburg, Community Center of Blacksburg for the new interchange that's being proposed to replace the current South Gate Drive intersection, the signal on the 460 bypass of Blacksburg. This was a design public hearing. We proposed a, an exit that's sort of a new type of ramp and signaling sequence called a diversion diamond. It's kind of hard to explain if you hadn't gone to the public hearing. I believe the MPO has a bit of it on the website, it's linked on the county website. We also have display boards that were at the public hearing in our office, if anyone wants to see those. If anyone here or any public can come by our office, I can show you the things that we showed them at the public hearing. It'll be a new interchange closer to South Main Street, include a couple roundabouts because it also includes incorporating the relocation of West Tech Center Drive, that's the, that's the road that goes from, right now goes from Madison Stadium, goes up and around the airport, comes in over there. That's going to have to be relocated anyway because the airport is expanding, they're lengthening their runway, research center's expanding. So all that had to take into account when we're designing the new interchange to hook into Duck Pond Drive, South Gate Drive where it comes in near the stadium and Tech Center Drive, Tech Center Drive around the airport. Right now, I believe the estimated advertisement date for construction is about a year away, probably. Right now, they're saying December 2014, so we'll see if they hit that mark or not, I don't know. Still got some work to do on the design, rideaway, things like that. Other than that, it's sort of normal, you know, maintenance type stuff that we're working on. Finished up our paving routes, Can Carriage Road was the last one we had done, but we've done several, that was the last one. We did two and a half miles of Can Carriage Road down the Reiner area, that one needed it pretty badly. But I'll take any questions or comments the board might have now.
How much more do they have to do on Route 8 as far as right through the main businesses there? Are they going to make a three lane there right now or?
That is part of the school project, that's not, VDOT's not doing that project, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's, it's got us, it's not a complete center turn lane, there's a lot of pull-offs for left turn lanes, but it's not a continuous straight left turn lane.
Okay.
We do have a project at Fairview Church Road and the post office that's supposed to hook into that. Unfortunately, we're having problems with the design and the funding of that, so that's not going to be for several years.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Anybody else?
You had mentioned minor maintenance of Crab Creek, is that part of that minor maintenance?
Other than just normal routine grading of it, I can see if they've done it lately or if there's something more they need to do.
If you wouldn't mind double checking on that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I got one quick comment. Comment is, is that I'm sure the citizens in Wake Forest, thank you for the work that's going on and as soon as it's complete, I know my telephone rings, hey, you got it done because people, when the, when you move, the equipment was moved in and the pipe and everything, they really got excited. And so on behalf of them, I thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure Ms. Ennis is happy to.
Yeah, she'll call when you do.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is to go into work session, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, a roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
And we have a presentation on the Community Development Authority.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Jeff Mitchell was here, I don't know where he stepped out, but Nate Kaiser's here, I guess you're going to do it, Nate?
Yes, please.
Okay, come on. Nate's with First and Main Commercial Project over in Blacksburg, he's going to give the board an update on where that is and kind of start some discussions on what, some future developments that they'll be coming back to us to discuss.
Okay.
I'm Nate Kaiser, I'm with Christ Light Management Group and we are the property managers for Blacksburg APF Partners LLC, who are the owners of First and Main.
Could you bring the mic up a little bit?
Is that better?
No.
Thanks.
Much.
What I'd really hope to do this evening is to go through just a, really a two-part presentation. One part of this is an update, just so you know kind of where we've been and what we've been doing. I know there were a couple of gentlemen who had showed up for our meeting at the town the other day and that was much appreciated. The second part of this, we have actually invited our CDA professional from Stifel to join us this evening and he actually has a presentation that he'll go through briefly behind mine. As an update from First and Main, we really wanted to let you know kind of where we've been, what we've been doing. It has been a very accelerated process. I won't go back through all of the history behind that project, but it was originally developed by Fairmount and financed by Wacoia and that passed to Wells Fargo and that's where we intercepted the project last year when we purchased it. We actually, last June, finally got under contract on the 7th and we closed on the 29th. Just so you know, that is a, that's an extremely accelerated due diligence process. Normally a transaction of that size and magnitude, especially with the problems that that had. It's a six or nine month process, so we were very serious and the buyers I represent are very committed to that project. That night, I think the storm that came through was the largest outage in AEP's history, so the first call that I made to Jeff that evening was, we did bind coverage at closing with Nationwide. And we actually had some damage that night, unfortunately, nothing severe, but nonetheless there. I wanted to go through a few of the issues briefly that we have been covering. In this area right here, there were a lot of unfinished plans that were put together for that shopping center. We've tried to collate those into something that can be useful and something that can be executed upon. It's been fairly difficult at times, but we've worked through a lot of our issues. We already know that we have a parking problem. We actually parked two code today for everything that we are, either have built or are under construction on. However, if we want to expand and get the national tenants that we are targeting, there are some, there are site criteria call for a different parking, a higher parking standard than code, so we're going to have to consider that as we move forward. We actually have some good news reporting, if you see the large pipes, those pipes are part of the detention system and we were extremely concerned with the condition of the parking lot over top of those, that those were going to have some pretty severe issues. It turns out that those issues are fairly minor. We still have some pretty significant work to do between the asphalt and the soils that were not compacted properly over top of those, but we are, we're undertaking that until the theater goes under construction. The big issue that we've had was the anchor. That shopping center would not survive without having an anchor come in. We have continued to support a lot of the community events that have occurred for a good amount of time on that property, including Fork at Work, Brew Do, we're helping launch the children's museum and the tenants actually run a couple of events, the Easter egg hunt and what they call Boo Do. We've continued to support those events, we're excited about the involvement that we have within the community. As part of the proffers, when we did a rezoning, we have proffered that we will have some meetings, both with the immediate neighborhoods and the surrounding neighborhoods. We have continued having those meetings through that process. They have been occasionally difficult, but actually very productive and we plan on continuing those. We've actually proffered that we will continue those for a fairly long period of time. The rezoning was a fairly major event for us. That rezoning was what allowed us to get moving with the theater. That IMAX facility was considerably larger than the theater that was originally contemplated with the shopping center, so we had a significant amount of work to do, both to prepare the pad, but also the zoning that was involved with the town to come to the point that we could actually construct the theater. We've executed that. I'll come back to the theater in a moment, but we actually, as part of the strategy that we have had over the past several months, was to engage national leasing agents. As we felt out what was possible within the framework of that shopping center, KLND, which is a large retailer about in the DC region, represented most of the national tenants that we wanted, so we just hired them. They've been on site, we actually are pushing letters of intent right now with three national restaurants and retailers that we were not working with prior to their engagement, so that's been very fruitful. This is a rendering of the IMAX theater that we are under construction on currently. The GC selection for that will finish up this week. We hope to have the general contractor on site beginning next week. We have had groundbreaking, obviously. We did a significant amount of work on that pad. The previous developer apparently never had any intention of actually using that pad. When we ran geotechnical reports, I wouldn't have built a parking lot on that pad. We have put in a significant amount of time and money. The random aggregate piers, brand new Geo piers that have been installed on there, we have 317 piers that you can't see that go all the way back to natural soils or bedrock that support the foundation of the building that's getting ready to go under construction. It was a pretty significant undertaking. Beyond that, we also did a pretty significant cut and fill for the slab stabilization it took to build that building, because that building's a pretty significant building for us. It's something that we wanted to take a pretty good amount of time and care with because we obviously hope it's there 20, 30, 50 years from now. There are some shots from inside the entertainment complex that we visited in Delray, Florida. Delray Beach is the latest prototype, it's the one that Blacksburg will be modeled after. We do have a few things that we are working our way through right now. We have made an initial submission to staff that we reviewed earlier today with the town, particularly in view of the signage restrictions and the restricted cabinets with the town that would keep us from doing what we need to do to get the national tenant signage that we require to move forward. We are working on that currently with the town staff. We have actually engaged a national marketing firm who is going to conduct surveys both locally and regionally as far away as back to West Virginia for a new rollout of First and Main that will occur simultaneously with rollout of new theater next year. Our next phase, here's what we purchased, basically the existing buildings in the pad and you can see the theater pad south down to King Street. Our next endeavor after we get the theater underway is to figure out parking decks. Now, this parking deck on the bottom right-hand side is the one that I think Jeff Mitchell would like to have. It's in Miami, they serve meals there. I was thinking we would like parking places, but I think we'll come up with something that will be intrinsically attractive to the community, but at the same time serves the purpose of what we need. At this point, my projection is initially, before we add any of the further services or tenants that we would like to put on that property, to fill out the existing tenant space, I probably need another 200-plus parking spaces, so that gives you an idea of the scope of what we're undertaking here over these next few months. We appreciate the chance to come speak with you, it's really the first time we've gotten to meet with you in public session. I've seen a few folks around and if you have any questions about the property, I'm more than happy to answer them before I turn it over to folks from Stifel.
Any questions aboard? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And our next guest.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, my name is John Markowitz and I work at a firm called Stifel Nicholas in Richmond. We are municipal bond underwriters and we specialize in a tool called Community Development Authorities and Tax Increment Financing. You may be familiar with these, these are economic development tools and I'm just going to talk briefly about what these are and how these have been used, particularly in Virginia. They're used all across the country and I'll go over some reasons for why they're used and how they're used. So just to start off, CDAs are geographic districts set up by the, set up by the county Board of Supervisors. They're given the power to finance or fund typically public infrastructure, so often a CDA is set up in association with a real estate project or projects and they, CDA itself issues bonds that go to pay for infrastructure. And the bonds are repaid, really one of two ways, either through assessments, which is where property owners within the district get an additional tax with their property taxes, or tax increment financing, which is where a locality pledges to give up, pledges to give up a small percentage of future taxes that they may not otherwise get in return for a project that may not occur at the same timetable, the same level, the same density. So it's a way to get a project moving. The debt issued by CDAs are not the debt of the locality, so one reason localities like this type of financing is it is a way to shift the burden for infrastructure to the private sector. So CDA bondholders actually have a lien on the private land within the district and local governments are precluded from paying the debt unless they enter into agreement beforehand. In terms of what is TIF, as I mentioned, localities across Virginia and the country look at different sources of taxes and do analysis to say, if we give up a small percentage of future real estate taxes for say 10 years, this will allow development to move ahead faster than it would have, to move ahead when it may not move ahead at all, to move ahead at a higher level, et cetera. So there's an addition to real estate taxes, there's sales tax, business professional occupancy license, wheels tax, there's a lot of different taxes that can be used, but as I said, they're economic development tools, so the reason a lot of localities like them in addition to shifting the burden of the infrastructure to the private sector is that, as y'all know, there's great demands on infrastructure today, things like parking, especially structured parking, are very expensive, so this is a way to make the private sector and the project kind of shoulder that responsibility rather than it all falling on the public side. So in addition to, as I mentioned, stimulating economic development projects, it's the reasons such as job creation, strengthening, growing your tax base, and I mentioned shifting the infrastructure burden to the private sector. There've been about 25 CDAs that have issued bonds in Virginia. Forty-nine states have a TIF statute, Arizona's one that does not and they are working on it. But in terms of how it's been used in Virginia, this is a deal we just did in Stafford County about an hour south of DC, and this was a project where the county said we don't have enough communities with, master planned residential communities with amenities, so they wanted to set up a CDA to pay for roads, ponds, parks, public infrastructure to help people move into the development sooner and make it a better development faster, which adheres to the private sector and to the public sector. Done several CDAs up in Northern Virginia looking at structured parking particularly. Most recently, after the recession, we did a CDA in Fairfax County, which was a redevelopment of an old industrial site and Fairfax County, as you can see the primary security there, they pledged all of the new sales tax and percentage of the new real estate tax for a period of time and if those taxes... taxes are insufficient, the developer, the private sector pays the difference. So, it's a way to leverage off the new development. And Fairfax County said, we wouldn't get this development if we did not offer this form of assistance. District of Columbia has done it as well. We did a project in Hampton, Virginia, which is somewhat maybe similar to First and Main in that it was a teardown of an old shopping center and built into a mixed-use town center, kind of like First and Main. You can see for Hampton, this was their largest taxpayer, and they had serious parking issues. And so, to get to $93 million in CDA TIF bonds, they had to look at incremental property tax, sales tax, meals and amusement tax, and there was even a special retail assessment attached to leases in that district, which is like another sales tax. So, it was a way, again, to get a project going since it was 2007 at a real tough time with the economy. But this kind of gives you an idea briefly of how these tools are used and how they can be considered, and they're being considered by lots of localities for a way to finance infrastructure for economic development. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? I have one, and I think I might have to direct it to our attorney. Some of these projects include things like meals tax and things of that nature. Is that something that would affect the county? Can we do that?
No, we don't have meals tax. So, the town will be pledging meals tax. Meals tax, we pledge it all. Each is just given example.
Well, I'm talking about if we did something similar to that in the county. A TIF on a project.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you could pledge whatever taxes may be assessed.
On the project itself.
Okay.
So, if you did a, so if you did a new project that involved two new restaurants, you could pledge some of the, some of all of the meals tax.
But we can't get an increase in the meals tax for the project?
No.
That's my question.
No, no, no.
Yeah, to offset it.
No, it's a pledge of existence.
Does that involve an increase in taxes? This is just a pledge of a percentage of future taxes.
Yeah. You're basing it on the increase in assessment, not increase in tax rate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm a little bit late. We had a little bit of confusion about, hey, John, you want to? About getting the printed copies. Our goal tonight was to, twofold. One was just to bring it up today on what's going on. First and Main, there's been a significant amount of activity in the last 18 months. And the second was just to begin this conversation on Community Development Authorities. We'll be back when we get farther along and have a lot more detail. We just wanted to put this on your radar screen and start the conversation tonight. Our hope would be that we're coming back to you in 14 with a proposal, having first gone through the town of Blacksburg, coming to the board of supervisors, for us to use taxes from the future appreciated value at First and Main to help offset the cost of the parking deck at First and Main. We're not asking the county to invest new dollars or anything like that. We're just trying to figure out how we can build a parking deck that we need there on the property. But we'll be back when there's much more detailed presentation. This was just to get the conversation started.
Any questions? Mr. Mitchell?
Good seeing you.
Jeff, thank you.
Thanks for all the work on this project. I know that from the staff perspective and from the boards as well, that's been a concern, the longevity of that project, and I think the new ownership and the leadership you guys have put together is moving that thing forward very well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussion in the closed meeting?
Work session.
Work session? I do that every week. Getting mad.
Ten years ago, where it looked at, and there was gas stations that were out of business on that stretch, a hotel that was struggling.
Oh, I remember, yeah.
And now you're looking, and there's some really nice shops in Bull and Bones, it's a busy place, and Sal's is one of the favorite restaurants of my life.
And with that movie theater coming in, it's just going to...
I'm looking forward to seeing some of them.
It's really busy on football weekends. It's extremely busy, because people want to go to the Bull and Bones and the Sal's.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I need a motion to go out of work session?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public address. We have nobody signed up for this public address. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Sam Young. I live on 114.
Can you bring the mic to you?
I live on 114, and I'm here tonight to discuss about the water system. They put a sewer through, and they were supposed to put the water through. They got a grant to do it, and I don't know what they done with the money with the water, but we got the sewer, and everybody got the water. And one of my neighbors got real sick off of well water out near the Arsenal. It's got acid in the wells out there. And the health department wouldn't even take care of it for him. Her name is Ms. Caldwell, Patsy Caldwell. And this has been a few years ago when Mr. Brown was on board, and we came out, we got a, we got to, wait a minute, I'm brain dead. We got a petition out. A lot of the neighbors signed, but we never did hear anything from anyone. And our sewer bills are real high. Mine is $57 a month. I have $2 that live out on 114, and the house in the building, and their bills are about $50 for water and sewer. And I don't think it's fair to charge $50 some dollars for a sewer. And they talk about all the money they lose in the water system and all. I counted 15 fire hydrants from 114 to Price's Fork, and there's no houses along a lot of the places. I don't know why they put all of the water lines there, and they won't run it back at 114.
We don't have a conversation at our public address here, so we're going to take information.
Did you hear his address? I wanted to make sure we get that.
Yeah, I wanted to get that.
I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt you, but I wanted to get his address.
It's 4025 Bradford Lane.
4025 Bradford Lane?
Bradford.
Bradford, B R A D.
That's right off 114, isn't it?
Yeah, right. We have a church at the road there, and they don't, they don't have, they're not hooked into the water, but they pay the sewer too. But I did know that we got a lot of acid fumes in the air from Arsenal down there, and it was in the ground at one time, and they worked on down to Arsenal, so it's probably, what's the problem is. It's not healthy.
You might want to bring this up to our PSA board when we hit the first Monday of every month?
Yeah, I've been to PSA. They won't do anything about it.
All right. Then you come in?
That's why I came here.
Okay, there then.
And there's land out through there that can be developed if they had the water through there. And whenever you get the land developed, it's more tax for you, if it's counted along. But I thought I'd come before someone got sick off that acid out there. Like I say, I've been three meetings, and they never would get back with me.
Okay. We'll make a note of it.
We'll certainly follow up.
Follow up on it for you.
Okay.
And your name again?
Sam Young.
Okay, and zip 27043?
Sir?
Your zip code?
Yeah.
27043.
Are you sure it isn't 24141?
Yeah, 24141.
Oh, Bradford, right.
It's it.
Yes. I wonder if it's Bradford or Christiansburg over there.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay. Next item is old business. Subject A, A F D seven, number seven renewal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
The next item is subject B, A F D number nine renewal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
The next item is county attorney's report.
You got one more.
Yeah, there's one more.
C.
C.
Yes.
A F D number 10 renewal.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Subject C is A F D number 10 with number two. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Next item on the agenda is county attorney's report. County administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items this evening. First, in your agenda, we included a copy of a letter from Ms. Blackburn, the school superintendent, addressed to me last week regarding the school board's request of $388,000 in one-time funding for security equipment, as mentioned, or as approved by the school board at their November 5th meeting. Staff has been looking at this request, and we are also working with the school board finance staff right now. We believe that in some of the capital project funds for the old, the new Price's Fork Elementary School and several of the other projects, there may be capital funding already appropriated to the schools that we can reappropriate from these projects as they're completed to cover this. That's why we didn't have an appropriation request on the board agenda tonight. We hope to have information back on that for the November 25th meeting. Ms. Blackburn's here tonight if you had any questions regarding the request specifically, but we think we'll be able to cover that with capital monies that are already available without having to appropriate any additional county general fund money to cover it. We think there's money already there. So, just wanted to make you aware of it. As I said, Ms. Blackburn's here if you had any questions tonight, but our plan is to bring that back to the board just as quick as we can to move the money in the right pot, if you will.
Craig, the security enhancements have already been put in place at Falling Branch, right?
Yes, sir. The Falling Branch is fully operational at this point. Isn't that right, Ms. Blackburn?
Yeah, let it come up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, see how it's working out. I mean, you know, see. Hey, you know, we're going to come here. We're just going to let you talk.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, actually. Falling Branch is fully operational. We're getting very positive feedback, not only from the staff, but from the parents who are in and out of the school. There's been a couple of our local news stations that have done a little coverage on TV about the system that we're using. In addition to Falling Branch, Christiansburg Primary School is finished, Christiansburg Elementary School, and Harding Elementary School are well on the way, and Christiansburg High School is currently being reviewed for design. So, that is all a result of the grant money plus a little residual funds that we had in addition to the fact that you gave us $400,000 last year, $25,000 of which was used as a match to this grant.
Any other comments or questions?
My only comment, I'm just glad to see everything underway, because I, you know, being someone that works in the schools on a daily basis, I just think it's critical that we do everything in our power to secure and protect our schools and our children, most of all, and staff. And, you know, and still having schools that where anyone can walk in, you know, I just don't think that's going to be the wave of the future, unfortunately. So, I'm glad that you all are doing all the work that you're doing to secure this.
I would certainly, you know, like to say a word of thanks to all of the local law enforcement agencies, because they have worked hand in hand with us to develop what we consider the core system that we're installing in each of the schools. Town of Blacksburg, County of Christiansburg, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department did a close review of all of our schools and were very participatory in helping us design the ultimate system that we have come up with.
Anybody else? Chris?
Whether we have the funds from the Price's Fork or we use other capital funds, I'm in favor of making sure that the schools are safe and that each one of the schools has a very similar system, and so every parent feels like when they put their kid on the bus, that they're going to be safe at school. Obviously, there's, we don't want to turn our schools into prisons, but at the same time, we want to have that security, and I think that's a reasonable step. And so, whether the funds are there or whether we need to look at the capital funds that we've set aside, in my mind, this is something that I would like to see a priority. I'd love to see us be voting on this, maybe if we can get the numbers back in December. I don't, I've got a senior at Christiansburg High School, but I know that if I had an elementary school, especially taking care of the Falling Branch situation, that I would want to know if they were safe.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you for that. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Chair, just two other things real quick. The Huckleberry Trail Project, the bridge repair project that had required the trail to be closed, was initially just for a couple of days. It actually stretched into a week or so due to some other issues they found once they started repairing the bridge. That bridge was open this afternoon, so the Huckleberry Trail is back open again. Certainly appreciate the town of Christiansburg working as quickly as possible with the contractor to get that completed. Last thing, we have advertised, as I've mentioned to you previously, for the planning director position. I spoke to the planning commission earlier this evening about plans for moving that forward. Hopefully, we're going to begin interviews the end of this month, 1st of December, and move as quickly as we can. So, that's, got that covered as well. And that's all I have this evening.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, a few things. From the FACO Annual Conference, we passed the legislative package yesterday, and I have the draft that was passed plus the new things that were changed in the draft, and then one item that was added was to, from the floor, was to delay the implementation of the storm management requirements by a year. And I'm not sure if FACO is going to have all of this online before we meet with our legislators, but I was thinking if they didn't, maybe we could take this some way so that we could actually give this to them before we go to Richmond along with ours. I thought that would be good, so I brought the, you know, what I have, you know, to give to Craig. Also, something that I felt really overwhelmed by was when I went to the discussion of the unfunded teacher pension liability. I know that Carol and Craig know far more than I do about this, but this is what I got from it. I want to report back to you that they say there's a $15.2 billion unfunded teacher pension liability, and the state is responsible for one-third of it, and the counties for two-thirds are the localities. And this has come about because of changes in accounting standards forcing localities to claim all $15.2 billion in unfunded liabilities for teacher pension plans where they're on their financial statements after June 15th, 2014. The concern is how much of this liability will counties be forced to carry, and how will it affect the bond ratings of your county? So, they had a gentleman named Joe Casey, who's the deputy county manager for administration from Henrico County, and he suggested that the state might want to carry the actual liability on its side, because maybe it would not hurt the state's bond rating as much as it could hurt an individual locality's bond rating, especially some of the smaller localities, smaller localities. And localities are being faced right now with building and construction. Counties would still have to pay their part... Counties would still have to pay their part, but he was trying to determine maybe a way it would be less hurtful to county's localities. Well, then, the delegate that was supposed to be speaking for the General Assembly, Stephen Landys, he recognizes the issue and, and what an issue it is for localities. He said he and his colleagues were open to discuss ideas such as Mr. Casey's, but nothing had been decided yet. So I just wanted to alert everybody on our board that this is something I see as, as something that could really impact our, our future budgets. And I know Craig and Carol know much more about it than I do, but after I left that meeting, I was just like, uh-oh, here we go again, you know?
Well, what, and just to elaborate on that, what, what this new accounting requirement requires is that the localities and/or the state show this unfunded liability as a liability on the, on the county's balance sheet. It, it's not a matter of having to come up with additional funding to cover that, it's just a liability on the balance sheet. But the problem is when the bond rating agencies evaluate a locality, they look at your balance sheet as far as your fund balance and your net assets. And so this would be a huge hit. And, and it's a big issue for Montgomery County. It's a much bigger, it's an even bigger issue for some of the larger localities like Henrico, Chesterfield, the Northern Virginia counties. And I know that there's gonna be considerable discussion with the General Assembly about the state, that, because the state, if they assume that on their balance sheet, it doesn't require the localities to take it on. So there's gonna be quite a bit of discussion on that. It is an accounting issue, but it's a very real issue, especially as it could potentially impact the locality's balance sheets and their bond ratings.
Right. So just to alert, and I was glad that VACO had a workshop on that. Another thing that I discussed with Craig, because I figured that he had picked it up along the way, is there is a new investment opportunity for localities. It's called the VACO VML Virginia Investment Pool, VIP for short. And it's, it's designed so that if localities, I guess the treasurer in this case, wanted to invest county money, supposedly it will be making more money than if it's just left in some of the accounts that we have now. So Craig has already told me that he's passed it to Richard. So we've got that covered. There was a gentleman from Faukeer County that gave an impassioned speech about something called Operation First Response, and it's serving wounded heroes and their families. And they're challenging all the counties to have a dollar donation per citizen in their county all across the United States. And they want to join together so they can make a difference to those who have given so much for us and our freedom. And so I have the information. It has a website, so we'll pass that on if you all want to take a look at that. And let's see. The other thing, upcoming VACO events. There is gonna be a county supervisors forum, January third through the fifth in Richmond, for new supervisors or supervisors that have served. And I guess they're just gonna discuss different issues that come before the supervisors. Then, we're gonna have the VACO Lobby Day, and that is February sixth, and it's on a Thursday. And I would encourage any of us on the board that can possibly go to go. I think it's extremely important to show our face to our General Assembly members in Richmond in their circumstance, and it helps when we're all together and we're able to do that. I know some of us, you know, have job, day jobs, but if anybody can go, it's well worth it to, in my personal opinion, because I, I enjoy doing that, because I think they need to remember that we're watching and we have needs and we're gonna be coming to them again, not just before they leave, but while they're there. At the same time that that's going on, they're gonna have training going on for chairpersons of boards. Then there is a training for new supervisors that were elected, and I believe that Craig's gotten that information out to Mr. King. And I think that's a, I know that Mr. Tuck went to that and...
Matt went also.
Yeah, and Matt. And, you know, so it, and it's probably a very, I think, worthy thing to go to. Because you, I mean, even though you watch board of supervisors meetings and you sort of think, I know that I watched board of supervisors meetings for fifteen years before I ever got on the board. And I think it was like, after I'd been on the board for like a week, I'm like, whoa, you know, there's a lot more than even you, you know, you think you need to know. So that's coming up. Let's see. Anything else? They're also gonna have a rule caucus reception and dinner, I think, February fifth, the night before the VACO Government Day. So let's see, that takes care of all that. And I think that's all I have to report, except I will take Ms. Perkins' iPad to her if you want me to, because I'm gonna forget that. So thank you.
Supervisor Tuck?
Just a brief few things. Many of you know that the Sheezer Motor Mile Talent Contest is coming up.
Yeah.
That's coming up November the twenty-third at seven o'clock. It'll be at New Blacksburg High School. Each one of the participating kids, I went last year and I was thinking, oh, I'll be going to a nice little high school event. It'll be interesting. I, my shoes were knocked off. The kids were so talented. This was like going, you went to New York, DC, to LA, and you felt like you were watching one of these talent shows. These kids have the opportunity, the grand prize winner brings twenty thousand dollars back to their school. Twenty thousand dollars back. Second place is ten thousand dollars, total of fifty thousand dollars. Plus, the kids get money as well. It is a terrific event. You can contact your local schools. A hundred percent of the money that's raised, the tickets are seven, seven dollars for adults, go back to the school that you bought from. So if you want to support Shawze, you go down to Shawze, you buy your tickets from Shawze. You go to support Auburn, Blacksburg, wherever, you buy your tickets from there. I think each one of the schools has got about a hundred tickets. You start looking at that money, it seats about a thousand people. So that in and of itself, seven thousand dollars for our local schools. So that's about it.
Mr. Brown?
I don't guess I could top neither one of them. First thing I would like to say to Craig, thank you for your IT people who sort of bailed me out, changing the password and so forth. I think I screwed up my computer on Friday and, and trying to change the password or something like this and my son, and we fooled around with it. I said, don't worry about it, I get IT to straighten it out on Tuesday. Called Rebecca about nine o'clock and I said, I would've called you at eight, but I want you to have your coffee. And she said, you'll need to change it for you? Two minutes. And I'm sitting like, thank you. And so, I mean...
We'll pass that on.
Yeah, we got some, some good people and, and great people in IT. I attended a, an event on Sunday. It was an annual Veterans Day event, commemorative service, quite a few veterans at the Ashbury United Methodist Church. And what I'd like to say to, to all veterans in Montgomery County, who want to be lately, thank you for your service in keeping us safe. And it was November eleventh, but it's never too, too late to say thank you for your service. That's it.
Okay. I don't really have a report tonight, except for I attended, I guess, a full day at VACO and two of the meetings that I was involved in was the agriculture and environmental. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion on the stormwater. And Ms. Biggs caught me up with a little bit of a change that was made at the end. And I also attended the Transportation Committee. And we talked about our Dirt Lou project we did here. And hopefully, this will be something that'll move along and I feel that personally, because this has been a project I've been involved in since the beginning, feel like Mr. Clark kinda shortchanged it, but we'll see. Time will tell. And I went out to see the road yesterday, and it's, it's like a stone. It's just, you know, I think it's gonna be a good product to save, to get more miles per dollar. That, that's the goal. So other than that, if there's no other discussion or anything, I'll, whole meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, folks.